Go ahead and call to order our Amador County Selpa Board Meeting. Um, everybody is here except for Peter Gale. He will not be here tonight. Are there any additions or deletions, corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. And then we don't, it doesn't look like we have any public comments on non-agenda items. We will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? No? Okay, then we would just need a motion to approve the consent.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, and then the vote. Ken?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
James?
Hi.
Jared?
Yes.
Patty? I'm also a yes. Item seven, communications. We do not have a CAC Chair Report tonight. And we do not have any action items for number eight, but we do have some discussion items. So we will go to nine point one, the public hearing with Dr. Hedegaard.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. So California statute requires that before the Selpa Governing Board considers the local plan or any annual update to the local plan, which is what we're doing this evening, that the Governing Board shall hold at least one public hearing in order to solicit the recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the specific sections and expenditures proposed to be included in the plan. So tonight we'll be holding the public hearing. Attached for supporting documents is the notice of public hearing that has been posted at all of our school sites for the last forty days. And in addition to that, I just want to comment that the materials are also available on our Selpa website for viewing. They had been shared with our Community Advisory Committee at one of their regular standing meetings. So we would like to hold the public hearing tonight and receive any feedback.
Okay. Can you hand me the little thing up there, please? Okay, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing. And does not look like there's any comments or feedback, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay. Um, and it looks like we can move on to item number two, the Selpa Local Plan.
Perfect. Okay. So this evening, we are presenting an annual update to our Amador Selpa Local Plan. Just as a reminder, each Selpa in the state of California is required to have a local plan, which describes how it provides special education services to the populations that, excuse me, the populations that it is servicing. So this evening, what we are going to be updating you on is every year, we have to do the contracts and certification section, as well as then the annual budget plan and the annual service plan, the attachment support section D and E. The full local plan, also just as a friendly reminder, was reviewed just last year and approved both by our Selpa Governing Board and the Department of Education. So the governance and administration section is available already on our website. There have not been any significant changes since last year, which is why then the state requires that that section be updated every three years unless there has been substantial changes. This is just a slide to remind you of the timeline. So we participate alongside the business office to draft the local plan. The Community Advisory Committee is a very strong partner to us and also a required participant in the process of establishing the local plan to make sure that families and parents are, their feedback is included. So the draft plan was presented to the Community Advisory Committee on April 1st. There were discussions. We've integrated the feedback that they had provided. Tonight, we had then, we have the governance presentation and the public hearing. And then we will be submitting this plan to the Department of Education no later than June 30th. I do want to just highlight at our last Selpa meeting, when I had presented this timeline, I had highlighted that I would be bringing that back as an action item to you tonight. And I have prefaced that that has changed because it was corrected for me through the state Selpa organization that then we do not have to provide, it is as an action item or seek governance approval, except for when we are updating every three years with the governance section. So that's why it's being presented to you this evening as a discussion item. The contract section of the Selpa Local Plan really highlights, again, how Amador is so unique, that we are a unified school district, we are a county office, and we are a special education local plan area. The local plan is designed to really be targeted towards the Selpa, where often Selpas have multiple local education agencies that are under their purview. So it is a collective plan for special education in a region. Whereas for us, it may seem contradictory at times or wonder why we're being repetitive, rather that it's all under one umbrella for us and encompasses our county programs as well as Unified School District. So with that in mind, excuse me, I am going to pass it over to my colleague who will run us through the annual budget plan.
Perfect. Thank you, Sadie. And so to go over the annual budget plan, that is the Selpa Local Plan, section D for the annual budget plan. And really this, like many of our other budgets that we present for the district or the county, is based off of projections found on the most current information available at that time. And the time that this was done, the most current, up-to-date information we had in a lot of cases was the governor's January budget proposal. Obviously, we've had a few months reserved since then. And the next update will be with the May revision, which literally we should have by next week. So at that point, these numbers effectively will change by the time we get to the annual budget. But for this purpose, it was all based around the January's governor's proposal. In addition, we base it off of historical funding, just for the sheer fact that we don't quite know yet. In fact, we sometimes will find these federal dollars, figure out exactly what we're going to get come January of the next year. So it's quite a bit of delay. So a lot of it is using our best estimate based on, again, the information we had, which historically is our historicals. Then we look at our expenses, and those are off of our current position staffing levels. We look at our vacancies, then our historical expenditures, annual spend and initiatives. This last year, for instance, we bought a van with a chairlift, which, you know, was unique and different in that sense. Then review any estimated changes from the prior year based on any department changes or priorities that we have. And so when you look at special education funding overall, there's really three main buckets. You have the state and local, the local contribution, and the federal. And so you can kind of see how that all comes into play here. The main bucket of the state, you're looking at the AB 602. And AB 602 basically establishes the way that California allocates state funding to special education local plan areas or Selpas. Factors include primarily our ADA within the Selpa. Other smaller factors include such as the number of low incident students, as well as out-of-care funding, i.e. foster youth. And then you look at, we also have as a part of the state funding, the other state funding sources, such as we get dollars for mental health, workability, infant funding, things like that. And then overall, state usually encompasses around thirty percent of the special education funding. So these are basically dollars that are specifically called out for special education as a whole from the state. At the federal level, it usually comes in at around eight point eight three percent, as it reflects up there. And these things would include like IDEA or Individuals with Disabilities Education Act funding. Federal law mandates that public schools provide special education and related services to eligible students with disabilities. And to help offset the costs associated with these mandates, the federal government allocates funds to states, and these funds are then distributed to local education agencies like ours. So IDEA has two parts, the Part B and Part C. Part B, basically, you're looking at, of IDEA focuses on providing special education and related services to eligible children ages three through twenty-one. And then Part C focuses on infants up to age three. So basically, that's to keep the differences between there. And then what you have also is the local contribution. So what the local contribution is, is what the LAIA essentially needs to contribute to, or toward special education, really to fulfill the needs of our students from the general fund itself. So these aren't necessarily dollars that are earmarked necessarily toward special education, but that we deem that are necessary for the services for our students. And that generally encompasses the largest bulk, roughly around sixty percent. So this here kind of breaks it out. You'll see the three color schemes. Purple is local contribution. The green is the state funding. And you can see the different shades for the different types of funding. And then the blue is for the federal. And you can see, we follow very similarly to the percentage split that you saw overall. This is the whole Selpa funding. So this is really both of our county and district combined when you're looking at special education. The funding total comes in at about seventeen million, as it sits today. Two point, or twenty-eight point three eight percent is state, six point one six percent is federal, and sixty-five point four six is from our local contribution. And so this really encompasses like property taxes and just our general fund to fulfill needs of students. I just want to reiterate that one again here. So if you look at the split side by side, as a single single, generally what ends up happening is a lot of our federal, actually all of our federal funding comes in on the county side. And then the county then supports those services to the district. So even though the funds do come in and are spent on the county, a lot of the services that are fulfilled actually help to support the district students as well. So even though it comes in on the one side, it really helps support both. But you can kind of see the difference here of how the state, fed, and local contributions are divided between the county on the left side and the district on the right side. So significantly more of the state and local, or sorry, state and federal dollars come in on the county. And then so when we look at projected budget expenditures, the total expenditures will match those total revenues that are anticipated to go toward special education. And as we've spoken about in other percentages, around eighty percent is generally your salaries and benefits. Ours is closer to seventy-one point seven percent. Services account for four point four million, or twenty-five point five percent. And then supplies at four hundred and one thousand, capital outlay at about twenty K, and other outgo financing at sixty-seven K. Main thing to note from this, we currently have quite a few vacancies, and this budget is expecting that situation not to change. So as it sits right here, that's if we were anticipating no changes to vacancies, this is what it would look like. The major reason why our services are so high is as a percentage of the whole, as we have these contract services out to help fulfill this, primarily involves our speech services. And this is something, obviously, we discuss on a, say, quarterly basis, so not more so often when we have the Selpa meetings. Okay. Yeah, please.
So the twelve point four million in salaries and benefits, that doesn't include a number for any of the vacant positions right now. They're not included in that.
Correct.
And we're not expected to fill any of those positions next year?
For this budget purpose, we are not. Obviously, we are working on initiatives to change that. And so when we come to the budget adoption for the district and the county, I would expect to see some adjustments to that.
Thank you.
This was also prepared by, for the April first, first proposal of this setup. So we had different things evolve since then. And so this shows you the split as it sits for the district and the county. Again, the county is now on the left side and the district's on the right side. And when you look at that eighty percent split, it is a little bit different here as well when you're looking at the positional. And you really see the services have an impact on the county side, since most of our vacancies do lie on the county side. And a lot of those extra services that we have contracted for are also on the county side. So that's kind of how you can identify the bulk of the difference here. Okay, and so the regionalized operation budget. Now this is what it costs essentially to run the operations of Selpa. So it's like costs such as the Selpa Director, other special education directors, the support staff within the Special Education Department, not so much the teachers that are, or the service providers that are actually out there. So this is just the general scope here at about one point nine. And so that's what we have from the budget perspective.
Okay. So the next section, oh, getting my slides confused. So the next section we're going to be reviewing is the annual service plan. So this is updated every year, although the template itself is pretty streamlined. So this lists all of the services that would be available through our Selpa, should students be found eligible. We do utilize the Special Education Information System. That's our digital IEP system. And that's where then we indicate, you know, an individual student compared to A, compared to individual student B would have different services based on their needs. And those services are, they have titles as well as definitions that have already been defined by our California Longitudinal Pupil Achievement Data System, or CAOPADS. So all of the definitions that are placed into the detailed description box in this section come from our CAOPAD system. So, excuse me. They do, this, of course, is how we literally define that we are providing a free and appropriate public education. All services are based on student need and then are also identified through standardized processes. One thing that may stand out to you in reviewing the annual service plan document in and of itself, though, is that there is one service that is not being provided for the, in anticipation of next year. And that is a code five forty, which is defined as day treatment. This was intended to be removed from the template from the Department of Education. So since April, we received that notice from the state to just not populate this section, that that won't be a service that's available to us. Otherwise, what you'll see is, is that all of the services are indicated because it's essentially making this statement to our community that based on the students' needs that are identified over the course of the next year, we're ready and will be prepared in order to service you. So those are really the updates for our annual local plan revisions for this year. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for listening.
Okay, so two questions. What was day treatment and why is it being removed?
So day treatment is a reference that I would offer is a bit outdated. But it would really reference when we would identify that a student needs to attend what we would now refer to as a non-public school and is off-site. You know, we're contracting with an entity that they needs a higher level of service, that we can't service them on our campuses anymore. It used to kind of encompass a, what we would refer to historically as wraparound services. So it's like, it would be like a suite of services. And that's really not the preference anymore. If we identify a student need, for example, with behavior, we want to have a goal and a service that directly lines to behavior, regardless of whether or not they're on our campuses or a non-public school. So that's the why that they're removing it, is that really there are other services that then we'll be able to address and meet the students' needs. And that is just outdated, is why they want to take it away.
Okay. And then the second question goes back to the local plan currently composed of five sections. Section C, local assistance. It says currently on hold until 2027.
Yes.
Why is that?
Thank you. So that is, that's actually at the state. So that section has never, that's not our having it on hold. It's that that template has never been provided by the state before. And so they're essentially going through a writing process. So that was the update, is that now it's going to be available in 2027. Previously, it was anticipated to be available this year. So, yeah. So that is a section that no Selpa has ever utilized before, but we want to be prepared once the template becomes available from the state.
Would local services be these outside services that we were just talking about for the code five forty?
No, no, those would not be the same. So that would be, it would really be more of the terminology like educationally-related mental health. We refer to that as the code five hundreds. And it usually incorporates, for example, counseling and guidance, social work services, parent counseling that's related to that, individual counseling. So some of those types of services may have previously been in a package for day treatment that if a student was in that restrictive of a setting, that it would have been built into the program. So instead of listing those out individually for an hour a day or, you know, identifying the frequency and duration that the student needs. So that's more of an example of where we have those services available to our students here in Amador, but it's understood that then that's, that is in conjunction with the fact that we feel their least restrictive environment is our local campuses.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Shane, did you have any questions? James?
I don't have, I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right. I don't either. Thank you guys for the presentation. So we can move on to item three, the staffing update.
All right, perfect. So this staffing update for this month is actually two pages. So the first slide is actually our current 2024, 2025 vacancies. This is yet another iteration of what we're trying to share. So you'll notice that then we placed the classified and certificated both on the same sheet. Classified is just in the red. The second sheet, the second page is also providing you with an update at the time that it was generated in last week of our vacancies that are anticipated for next year, given resignations, et cetera, and transitions that we're aware of. I will just highlight, we're coming alongside our Human Resources Department in the events that they're hosting for recruitment and retention. We're very appreciative and hopeful to, you know, be extremely proactive to fill these vacancies. So I'm pleasantly surprised by the number of interviews that are currently happening. And we're very appreciative, too, of all of the site leaders. Many of the teaching positions that are at our sites. So school principals are then the host for those interviews and, you know, making those decisions as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
For services like the speech and language and occupational therapist, it says that those vacancies are only on the county side. Are those, do we have any SLPs and occupational therapists that work with our kids on the district side?
Great question. So this, and please, I will ask Superintendent Critchfield if you would like to expand on any historical context here. But with the separation of special education staff between SEEK as representation and also ACTA, what was determined at the time was that designated instructional services, DIS providers, which would include speech and language, occupational therapists, et cetera, and are the teachers in our extensive support needs programs would be under SEEK and essentially are identified to be county employees. Versus then our mild to moderate teachers are members of ACTA and they are Unified School District employees. In that original, when in the contracts display where it was the bubbles that grew of like Unified School District, County Office, and then the Selpa, that's a nice way of saying it is really common in other entities where the county office and the Unified School District are separate and have separate staff, that then those types of positions would be contracted, that the district would contract essentially with the County Office of Education. So I would say, you know, all of the students that are being served under the umbrella of our speech and language therapists, although they're employed on the county, they're serving our district students. It's just like if the district was contracting with the county to provide those services. So that's why they're not listed separately, and you can really look at it as a whole. But again, with the language, it can be confusing. So I don't know, Mr. Critchfield, if you'd like to add to that.
Especially for, for Ken, being our newest board member here tonight. So in February of 2020, we conducted an agreement with SEEK, which represents our certificated staff on the county side, and then ACTA on the district side of transferring some special ed employees to the district. Prior to that, all special ed employees were employed by the county office, no matter what they did. And so essentially, the determination was made to move the mild moderate teachers to the district. That was February 2020. We know what happened in March of 2020. But we still went through with the transfer, and that actually occurred in November of 2020. And so, you know, we're very unique in the way we're comprised as a district and a Selpa because while there's only seven single singles in the state, we are, as far as we know, we're the only one that runs our own Selpa on top of that. And so it gives us some unique challenges, but also some opportunities. And so it was determined at that point in time that it made the most sense to employ all of our extensive support need teachers and designated instructional services employees as county office employees. But that doesn't dictate the students they serve. They serve all students under the Selpa, which it's the Amador County Selpa, so it's the entire county. So it doesn't, in the end, it doesn't really matter if a student is a district or a county student counted that way, or an employee is a county or district employee. If they are providing a special ed service, they're going to provide it to a student within the county regardless. Does that help?
So what was the benefit of doing that?
So the growing cost of special ed, one of the issues we identified was to have all, with the county's budget being significantly smaller than the district's budget, the district was in a position where they were, we were sending millions of dollars to the county to be able to employ teachers who were district, essentially providing district functions. And then in working with California Department of Ed, those expenses were actually getting booked as a double expense. So we would spend the money on the district side. It was counted an expense to send the money to the county, and then the county would actually pay the employee. So it, one of the things that was a financial determination was it appeared like our budgets were larger than they actually were because we were taking dollars on one side, spending them, and then spending them on the other side. So it looked, we were, we spent them twice, so it looked like we had double those dollars that we didn't actually have. So.
All right. Any other questions?
I have one question for Robert. So it looks like this year, our vacancies are eleven employees on the county side and five on the school district side. And then next year, fourteen and nine. So is that discrepancy, are those, are these increased vacancies then not included in that twelve point four million in salaries? We're not anticipating filling those positions?
So there was a vacancy increase between twenty-four, twenty-five, as it sits today, and twenty-five, twenty-six. We are anticipating to at least fill that gap, if you will. So we are expecting it to be for that budget purpose, the same as twenty-fours, twenty-fives. We've had more people who have put in their notice and things like that from the time we established the budget to where it is today. So there's going to be some fluctuations with year end, as we have folks now leave, and then as now we hire new folks. So at the current status, we thought it'd be status quo would be the best way to go.
Okay. So we anticipate these vacancies for twenty-five, twenty-six actually being more like twenty-four, twenty-five?
For this budget purpose, I will say yes. I am optimistic, just as Dr. Hedegaard is, that ideally, we're actually lower than this.
Okay. Thank you.
Shane, any questions or comments?
Kind of a question, maybe an inquiry. Are you able to comment on any improvements in trying to retain employees as far as versus contract services?
So not quite yet.
Okay.
Not quite yet.
That was, that was the inquiry.
We have, we have been working with our SEEK partners on some, some deals that would make it more advantageous to come and work in the special ed department.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. James?
No, not at this time.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I don't have any other questions. So we will just move on to our next meeting is to be held here on Wednesday, October 8th. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are back from closed session and we do not have anything to report out. Do we have any deletions or corrections to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and get started with our presentations and recognitions. See, so many of you here are for our community hours for certificates and Block A awards.
Yes, I'm going to move to the podium. Okay, so we have quite a few students to recognize tonight. I first want to acknowledge, we did have a scheduling conflict. Amador High School is having their scholarship night tonight, so there are some students not able to attend. They will be invited back to come to the June 11th board meeting, or will be recognized in some other way. So, this is how it's going to work. Many of the students here are here for their Block As. You may or may not realize this, but you're going to speak tonight. So, what I will do is I will call out the student's name and how many hours, and then you have three options. You can give us like a 30-second or less summary of your community service. You can talk about one aspect of community service, or just stare at the school board awkwardly for about five seconds and then move on. Okay? So, those are your three choices. Once you are done, you're going to make your way over here, and Dr. Hedegaard is going to give you your little gift bag, and then you're going to stay there. We do photo ops here. Okay, so you're going to stay over here as a group until the end, and then Haley is here to take your picture. Okay? All right, so in this first group, these students completed a minimum of 135 hours of community service. Tonight, they will be receiving a certificate of recognition and a Block A letter for their service. So, first student up, from Argonaut High School, Bailey Baker with 160.5 hours. I was going to say, she's playing softball. All right, next is Kaia Bell with 189 hours.
For my community service hours, I got them from participating in a youth-long native camp, and I've volunteered hours at various local, state, and national rabbit shows, and I've done the Amador County Farm Day for third graders for the past seven years.
Great, the first one's always the toughest. Good job. All right, so with 258 hours, we have Olivia Gertan. With 162 hours, Devon Gelot.
I just want to say, everyone gets it wrong the first time. It's a guio.
Guio?
Yes. Everyone gets it wrong the first time. I got most of my community service hours from the shot clock and scoreboard from basketball, and the F C L A club at our local high school.
Okay, with 180 hours, Tyler Moody Eskamia. With 162 hours, Maria Nico.
For my community hours, I volunteered at the local preschool, at the Jackson State preschool, and I also volunteered at the Catholic Church at St. Catherine-Drexel.
With 144.5 hours, Riley O'Connell. With 165 hours, Jesse Santa Cruz.
For most of my hours, they were from church services, from altar serving, and helping out at soup kitchens. I've been helping St. Catherine-Drexel since around fifth grade, and to this day, I still altar serve from time to time, but I've been busy. But whenever I can, I still help out.
Okay, from Amador High with 136 hours, Carter Cowan. With 234 hours, Carter DeVore.
So, most of my hours have been from St. Catherine-Drexel, just been altar serving, and then helping during stations of the cross before Easter, and yeah.
With 155 hours, Lexi Himmel.
I've gotten most of my hours from working down at VCA and Amador Quarry leaders, and at the county fair, and at rabbit shows.
With 165.5 hours, Kylie Peterson. With 154 hours, Emily Thomas. Also with 154 hours, Mackenzie Thomas. With 194 hours, Ezekiel Valbuena. And with 186 hours, Sarah Waverly. All right, so our next group of students completed a minimum of 270 hours of community service. They will also get a certificate of recognition, the Block A, and a service pin. So, from Argonaut High School with 424 hours, Darren Allen.
I got most of my hours from fire cadets, and then 10 hours from Dean Smear for Fran.
With 279 hours, Shayna Avala.
I got most of my hours from taping and doing stats for Argonaut varsity football, and doing stats for varsity and JV volleyball.
With 393 hours, Elizabeth Combs. With 380 hours, Callie Morla.
I got all of my hours from youth advising for AJM Cheer.
With 278 hours, Abby Thomas.
I got most of my hours from the ION Fire Cadet, and then also the Preston Castle Haunt.
Okay, this next student was already awarded for completing 228 hours, and then they submitted another 145.5, for a total of 374 hours. Lily Faced. The next student had already been awarded for 284.5 hours, earned an additional 164, for a total of 448.5 hours, Chloe Page.
Hi there, so a lot of my community service has been to helping my club that I began this year, which is the Interact Community Service Club. I've also worked with Jackson Rotary Lions Club, Amador County Seroptimists. There's a lot more, but I'm kind of blanking right now, so thank you.
Okay, this next student was already awarded for 241 hours, earned an additional 110, for a total of 351 hours, Krista Rotar.
So, most of my hours are from T-AING and being a substitute teacher at my dance studio. I am also an altar server and a lecturer at St. Catherine-Drexel Catholic Parish, and I also helped choreograph the dance for the Miss ION Scholarship Camp this year.
Okay, from Amador High School with 328 hours, Melania Clark Gonzalez. This student was here last time, had earned 268 hours, added another 37.5, for a total of 305 hours, Cole Porto. All right, now we're getting to the heavy hitters. So, we have this group had a minimum of 500 hours of community service. They get a certificate of recognition, a Block A, a service pin, a keychain, and they also get a cord that they will be able to wear at graduation. So, from Argonaut High, with 523 hours, Haley DeWald. I should have known that. She's pitching right now, we need her there, not here. All right, so next, this student was already awarded for 298 hours, added another 322 hours, for a total of 620 hours, Bryn Begovic. This student was already awarded for 242 hours, added another 293, for a total of 535 hours, Sidney Clark.
I've done a lot with a bunch of different organizations in our county. I drove up and was a volunteer counselor for youth rotary camp for like eighth graders. I've helped at the youth soccer camp, and with Amador County Fair Floral Department, and the Preston Castle Haunt, just for a few of them.
Okay, for a total of 615 hours, Jaylen Lopez.
So, all of my hours are within a year of being the 2023 Amador County Fair Rodeo Queen, and within that year, I traveled from various community events and out-of-state events, and within that year, also, I got recognized by the State Senate for outstanding accomplishments.
Okay, with 550 hours, Brooklyn Whalen. This student was already awarded for 326 hours, earned an additional 211 hours, for a total of 537 hours, Morgan Clark Dennis. This student was already awarded for 233 hours, added an additional 294, for a total of 527, Madison Fair. 527, Madison Ferramont. Okay. Now, these last two students earned at minimum 1,000 hours of community service. So, these students get a certificate of recognition, a Block A, a service pin, a keychain, a cord. They also, through our Tobacco Use Prevention Education Program, will be awarded a $300 scholarship for their amount of community service. So, our first student with 1,010 hours, Michael Cavalli.
All right, so the majority of my hours come from Grace Fellowship Church. It's, I don't know where it's at from here, but it's close towards McCallum Hill. The majority that I do over there is I do a lot of their tech stuff. If you go online and want to watch a service, that's probably me recording. There's like two or three different cameras that I record from there. I also play the guitar when I'm not doing their tech stuff, so I'm also on the praise and worship team. I do a bunch of different labor around there. I've hooked up, like, I've trench 300 yards and put down water and electricity for them to like build a little venue area. Just recently, they used it for a wedding. Then, my favorite one is through Boy Scouts, I got a lot of hours. My favorite being, I got to counsel a camp. That one was, I did that three years in a row for two weeks in the summer. I stayed there the entire time. Yes, I did stink after. And then, yeah, just helping smaller churches too, like I did, I did a little bit with Kings You Church, that one is in Ione, and then also helped a church a lot in Sacramento. So, those are where the majority of my hours came from.
Okay. And last, we have with 1,047 hours, Arlo Miller.
I serve as Argonaut High School's FCC culinary president, and so I have acquired most of my hours from coordinating and working banquet events through the high school.
Okay. All right, so let's gather together, thank you. We'll get your picture. And then, you're welcome to stay for the board meeting, you are not required to stay. So, you're busy students, if you need to leave, you are also welcome to do that.
All right, we'll let everybody kind of trickle out of here real quick. Next up is going to be our challenge coin recognitions, and the first to go is going to be Argonaut High School with Mrs. Hunkins.
All right, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Challenge coins, the best and the worst thing I do all year. It's hard to choose. I'm going to bring my people up, and then bring them over to talk about them, if that's okay? All right, so I'd like to bring up Mr. Kevin Harlow. Ms. Michelle Joyce. Alina Vratas. And Sarah Yonin. So, Board President Parker, Board members, Superintendent minus the interim, Jared Critchfield, congratulations, and members of the cabinet. My name is Kelly Hunkins, and I have the great privilege of serving as the principal of Argonaut High School. Again, tonight's presentation is both one of my favorite and one of the most challenging moments of the year. Because I get to share a glimpse of incredible work being done at our school, it's my favorite. And challenging, because narrowing down this recognition to just a handful of individuals is no easy task. Truthfully, I could have given out 30 awards tonight if we had 30 coins. Our Mustang family is just that special. Argonaut High School is a remarkable place, full of passionate educators, dedicated staff, and supportive teammates. It's a campus where people lift each other up, problem solve together, share in each other's success, and laugh a lot. Most importantly, it's a place filled with heart. Every member of this team puts students first every single day. So, thank you for allowing me the honor of introducing these outstanding individuals tonight. I'm proud to call them colleagues, and even prouder to celebrate the difference they make in the lives of students and their school community. So, my first award winner is Kevin Harlow. Stay right here, yep. Don't go anywhere. So, Kevin, your commitment to student success goes far beyond the classroom. Whether you're teaching special education history or social studies, your focus is always on what matters most: caring for kids. You consistently meet students where they are, guiding them with patience, understanding, and high expectations. You are also a trusted and invaluable resource for the entire Argonaut community. From stepping in to cover classes, to helping out athletic events, or to serving on the site council, you also support administration with your deep understanding of student needs. You're always there. Your willingness to show up, support, and collaborate makes a tremendous difference. Your insights as a thought partner help us share, I'm sorry, your insight as a thought partner helps us shape stronger, more inclusive pathways for student success. And your easy laugh, thoughtful feedback, and positive presence bring a sense of calm and camaraderie to even the most challenging days. Argonaut High School is truly fortunate to have you on our team. Thank you for being a constant example of professionalism, compassion, and commitment to what's best for kids. So, one of the other people that I was going to present tonight was Mr. Chris Lucky, who's coaching the softball game tonight. So, I just wanted to acknowledge him and just talk about what an amazing person he is. I'm not going to read his entire thing, but he is really a cornerstone of what we do for kids across the district. He teaches kids from both high schools in some of the toughest math classes there are. So, he's really, really great. Our next awardee is Michelle Joyce. Michelle, your work as an instructional aide in the Special Education Department is nothing short of extraordinary. Reliable, dependable, and endlessly capable, you could step in and run any class with confidence and care. You approach each day with a contagious smile and a can-do spirit that uplifts everyone around you, students and staff alike. You're a steady presence at Argonaut High School, showing up nearly every single day to ensure that students get the support they need to succeed. And succeed they do, thanks in no small part to your commitment. Over the years, you've helped countless Mustangs cross the graduation stage, and many more find confidence in themselves along the way. Students seek you out, not just because you help them with academics, but because they'll know that you'll care for them with patience, kindness, and encouragement. The teachers you work with value you as a true teammate, someone who brings heart and hard work to every classroom. Michelle, you are a quiet force of good on this campus, and we are so thankful to count you as a member of the Mustang family. Alina, come on down. So, Alina is our ASB bookkeeper, and she is a rare combination of accuracy, precision, and hard work, all delivered with a friendly attitude and a fun spirit. Her smile lights up the front office, and her willingness to jump in and help with everything from athletics to senior trips to dances makes you an invaluable part of our team. You've turned the front office into a welcoming hub that students genuinely enjoy visiting, something we never knew we needed until you made it happen, and I have to kick them out. You connect with students in a way that is both supportive and accountable, offering guidance with kindness and clarity. Your ideas are fresh and thoughtful, and you share them with confidence, helping us improve in big ways and small. You bring energy, joy, and professionalism to your work every single day. We are truly grateful for everything you do. You are a fantastic addition to the Mustang family, Alina, and Argonaut High School is better because you're here. All right, I have a little wrench in the program tonight. I'd like to bring up Charlie Foyle. Come on up, Charlie. Okay, just so you know, I get teased all the time about him being part of my department, my school, my whatever. Everybody knows I'm not his boss, but they tease me about it. Hey, Charlie, have you checked in with your boss today? Whatever. Okay, but Charlie Foyle, here's. I need to tell you about Charlie. Charlie and I, when I started two years ago, started on a project for consolidation. We started on a lot of them, because Argonaut High School has a long way to go so that we could be the premier spot. We don't know how that's going to turn out. I mean, it's going to be whatever it is, but he really has done a lot. A couple of board members were there last week, seeing some of the things that have gone on. So, I just felt like I wanted to award him. So, in recognition of your unwavering dedication, hard work, and reliability, we are proud to present you with this coin. Charlie, you're not just the person we count on to build, fix, and improve every corner of the campus, you're the heartbeat behind many of the things that simply make Argonaut better. Your ability to complete countless projects with skill and precision is impressive enough, but your kindness, thoughtfulness, and your ever-present sense of humor truly sets you apart. Whether you're offering a helping hand or a perfectly timed one-liner, you make everyone's day a little lighter. We never quite know if you're pulling our leg or giving us the story straight, and honestly, we wouldn't have it any other way. Your blend of professionalism and personality makes our campus not only function better but feel better. Thank you, Charlie, for being the kind of person who shows up, gets the job done, and reminds us all not to take life too seriously. You are deeply appreciated. And finally, Sarah Yonin. Sarah, I've had the pleasure of knowing you since you were a young girl, and then as a student at Amador High, and watching you grow into a confident, compassionate, and inspiring school counselor that you are today has been one of the greatest joys of my career. Returning to Argonaut last year was even made more special by the chance to work alongside you. In just two years, you've gone from the junior counselor who patiently followed others to becoming a true leader, full of confidence, insight, and initiative. You bring forward bold, student-centered ideas and never hesitate to try something new if it might positively help a student. Your creative thinking and forward vision will have a lasting impact on our campus. But above all, what sets you apart are two qualities that can't be taught: your ability to say exactly the right thing at the right time, those words, and your infectious, genuine laughter. You uplift those around you, students, staff, and administrators, and it's no wonder your students trust and admire you so deeply. Sarah, you're not just great at what you do, you're one of my favorite people to work with. Your care, intelligence, and humor make you a leader worth following, and Argonaut High School is beyond lucky to have you. That's it for me tonight. Thank you so much for having us and giving us the opportunity to introduce you to some amazing people.
Thank you so much. Don't forget your picture, the photo op, with Haley, right over here. Okay, next up for challenge coins, we have Special Education with Dr. Hedegaard.
Good evening, good evening, School Board, Superintendent Critchfield, Cabinet colleagues, and Amador community. My name is Dr. Sadie Hedegaard, and I serve as your Assistant Superintendent of Special Education and Amador County SULPA Director. I am joined this evening by four members of the Special Education Leadership Team, which I am going to ask to join me at the podium now. Mr. Joshua Brock, your County Special Education Director, Dr. Steve Russell, Alternative Special Education Director, Ms. Jo Weber, County Program Specialist, and Ms. Jan Johnson, the District Program Specialist. I appreciate the applause. Each of these members of my leadership team will be presenting a coin this evening to the recipients. But the process of identifying individuals, just as Mrs. Hunkins had highlighted, was both rewarding and challenging at the same time. Tonight, our team focused on Special Education Department staff that serve under the County Office of Education and one community agency partnership. As you can see from, and have seen from previous school presentation, is also displayed on the screen, site, special education, instructional, and classified team members previous to this evening. I want to just highlight that. The two folks from Argonaut are not on the screen. But prior to this evening, they have been recognized by their school site principals throughout the 24-25 school year. We are very appreciative of the inclusive culture that exists within our communities, and that our site teams have been celebrating our special education team members. We have been celebrating alongside each of our Special Education Department colleagues who have been honored this year, and so that is what is displayed on the screen. So, with that context, I would like to thank you for having me this evening and present a coin to an exceptional community partner, Mahala Hendricks. Will you please join us? Thank you. So, Mahala is the Disabilities and Homebase Manager with Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency, or ACTA, for Head Start. For context, ACTA was created in 1981 with a focus on improving the lives of residents in the foothill region. While ACTA services and projects have varied over the years based on community need and also from priority in funding and programming, their support has been unwavering for Head Start, early Head Start, and Homebase programs. These programs currently are serving over 150 infants and toddlers, and are designed to promote the development of the children and to enable their parents to fulfill their roles as parents, moving them toward self-sufficiency. Further, these programs have a goal of preparing children for our kindergarten classrooms. As you can see, much of that work overlaps with the work that the SULPA does, and also the County Office of Education. Ms. Hendricks has served in this organization for over nine years, first as an infant toddler teacher, also the supervisor of the Blue Bell Facility, and currently as the Disabilities and Homebase Director. In her current role, she works, her work is focused on serving students with disabilities, attending IEP meeting, individual service plan meetings. She supports the organization to create inclusive classrooms, both culturally and physically. She is committed to identifying and addressing barriers for families, everything from transportation to services, to ensuring that families are engaged in the IEP process. Ms. Hendricks was born and raised in Sonora, and she currently lives there with her family who has joined her this evening. Her unwavering commitment to early intervention, the close personal connection that she has to her community, and being able to see the difference her programs makes on families is what drives her. On behalf of the SULPA and the greater Amador education community, we are so appreciative for our collaboration that exists between our two agencies. In particular, the collaboration that happens on a regular basis between Ms. Hendricks and our County Program Specialist, Jo Weber, is what makes these programs thrive. So, thank you, Ms. Hendricks, for your commitment to the Amador community, and please express our gratitude to the Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency for the collaboration which exists between our two agencies. We look forward to continuing to build our partnerships and having a positive impact. Okay, so now, and I have the coins here for you, so now I will turn it over to Mr. Joshua Brock, who will highlight our next recipient.
So, good evening, School Board, Superintendent Critchfield, Cabinet, and Amador community. So I'm Joshua Brock. I serve as Director of Special Education for Amador County Office of Education, and I appreciate you having me this evening and the opportunity to present a coin to an exceptional member of our Special Education Team, and that is Joy Wallen here. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about Joy. She's in her second year of service to the Amador community. It's our teacher for students who are deaf, hard of hearing. Some adjectives that come to mind when describing Joy would be caring, compassionate, and dedicated. She brings a wealth of experience and expertise to our community and has quickly built a strong rapport with her colleagues, with families, and the students that she serves. One area in which Joy has positively impacted Amador school culture that I would like to highlight this evening is in the promotion of self-advocacy skills. She expertly provides individualized lessons that I've enjoyed getting to see firsthand to help students understand their educational rights, to advocate for access to accommodations when needed, as well as just how to access their communities at large. She's an active member of the Special Education Chair Committee and provided a great presentation during a department meeting to support her colleagues in understanding deaf culture and how to promote independence across a variety of educational settings. So Joy, I am so pleased to present you with this coin as an acknowledgement of your contributions to our educational community. Thank you for all you do.
I'm Dr. Steve Russell, Director of Alternative Special Education. Thank you for having me this evening. The person that I'm going to recognize tonight with a challenge coin is Ms. Lisa Putney. Lisa has served the Amador community for almost 15 years as one of the early childhood special education teachers at Little Mustangs Preschool at Stony Creek. Ms. Lisa is a model of Amador gold standard for a variety of reasons, but tonight I'm going to focus on her ability to build and invest in relationships with families, colleagues, and her students. First, Ms. Lisa has outstanding rapport with her families and the students in her program. She supports families to be active members of the Individual Education Plan Team and understands strategies to support students at school and at home. Second, Ms. Lisa invests in relationships with her colleagues. She is an active member of the Preschool Special Education Assessment Team, co-plans with the other special education preschool classrooms, and has provided mentorship to new teachers. Last but not least, Ms. Lisa is a strong advocate for students and approaches each day with a student-focused lens. Her commitment to building student independence is unwavering, but she does so in a way that makes learning fun. I asked Lisa about her career highlights, and she told me that they include language development, social interaction, and maybe, most importantly, toilet training. The kindergarten teachers are applauding, right? So Lisa, thank you for all your years of dedicated service to our community. I am pleased to present to you the coin in acknowledgement of all of your contributions.
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Critchfield, Cabinet, and the community. My name is Jo Weber, and I'm a Program Specialist supporting Amador County Office of Education, which includes early childhood special education programs. Thank you for having me this evening to present a coin to an exceptional member of our Special Education Team, Ms. Lacey Henry. Ms. Lacey has served the Amador community for almost eight years and is currently a medically fragile aide in Ms. Kimberly Rollins' Little Ponies Preschool at Stony Creek. Her colleagues describe her as hardworking, dependable, enthusiastic, caring, and always willing to go the extra mile for students. Ms. Lacey steps up to the plate all the time, and when the classroom has a substitute teacher, she ensures that the routine in the classroom continues as she knows that routine is critical for our extensive support needs preschool students. This is just one example of the Amador gold standards of integrity that Ms. Lacey shows every day. In addition to her work duties, Ms. Lacey is attending Sacramento State University as a full-time student. She's pursuing her bachelor's degree in child and adolescent development. Once completed, Ms. Lacey would like to pursue a special education credential, and I really hope that we can maintain her in this community. Ms. Lacey, thank you so much for your dedication and passion to our littlest learners, and I'm so honored to be able to present you with this coin as acknowledgement of all your hard work.
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Critchfield, Cabinet, and Amador community. First, congratulations to you. I saw something on paper and I said, wait a minute, I missed that. I'm excited. I actually wish I could offer you a coin. I'm also very grateful for our Cabinet Team on behalf of Special Education, and I go everywhere, and I just... We feel a lot of support with our team, our leadership team, and I wanted to express that. So my name is Jan Johnson, and I serve as Program Specialist at Amador Unified School District on district side, mild moderate. Thank you for having me this evening to present a coin to an exceptional member of our Special Education Team, Teresa Davis. She was bummed that she couldn't be here, but it is her daughter's recital, and I think we would rather have her be there, and she will still get her coin. Ms. Davis has served the Amador community for two years in the following role as a Board Certified Behavior Analyst, or BCBA, for both the county and the district. Colleagues describe her as knowledgeable, reliable, a team player, and an excellent behaviorist. Two critical job functions for the BCBAs are conducting functional behavioral assessments, FBAs, and writing behavior intervention plans, or BIPs. Ms. Davis goes beyond what is required in the procedures to build relationships with those involved, ensuring that behavior plans are written with realistic expectations and implemented with fidelity. School site staff admire that she plays an active role in modeling what is expected, approaches challenges with authenticity and patience, and provides proactive and constructive feedback. Ms. Davis also approaches her work with a student-centered focus and the goal of building student independence, empowering them with the necessary skills to fully participate in their education. I am so pleased to present Ms. Davis with this coin as an acknowledgement of her contributions to our educational community. Thank you.
Okay, hold on really quickly before you go. I just want to give a personal shout-out here. I'm going to take my time here. I want to thank everyone tonight receiving their challenge coins. You guys do amazing, amazing work, and it is so important. I did want to give my special little shout-out to Ms. Lisa and Ms. Lacey, and this is the first time that Special Education Preschool has been recognized for a challenge coin, and it couldn't have gone to more deserving people. As a parent, leaving your three-year-old anywhere can be extremely anxiety-inducing, but when you have a child who is nonverbal, it's on another level. They can't tell you if they don't want to go. They can't tell you if they don't feel good or if something is bothering them. They can't tell you if they like school, if they had a good day or a bad day. So having trust in the fact that the people that you're leaving your baby with will take good care of them despite their difficulties is incredibly important. Ms. Lisa comes to class every single day, loving the kids like they're her own, and for that and her entire staff are so incredibly appreciated. It takes very special people to work with the tiniest, most vulnerable group of kids, and speaking from my own experience, the whole team do an incredible job, so thank you. Okay, go ahead and get a picture. Okay, so we have another... I'll let you guys head outside, and then we will have another presentation for Avid with Mrs. Hannah.
My name is Tara Hannah, and we are spotlighting Avid tonight. So I'd like to start by saying that Avid really does change lives. Since I've been teaching Avid now for the last eight years, I've seen some tremendous growth in all these students and some fabulous things that they have done. I myself am also a product of Avid, so I know firsthand that it works and it changes lives. Way back in 1993, I'm dating myself, but I was an Avid student, and I would have never gone to college right after high school without Avid. So I'm very thankful to the program. I know that it works, and it's just amazing. It's come full circle. Eight years ago, Ion Junior High asked me if I would be willing to teach Avid, and I said, oh my gosh, I can't wait because I'm a teacher because of Avid. So I'm very thankful for this program, and I just see the amazing things that it does for our students. Okay, so what is Avid? And you guys want to come up? Two amazing Avid students out of my big group, but they're going to speak as well. So just so you know what Avid is, Avid stands for Advanced via Individual Determination, and it is a program to get students college, career, and life skill ready. A lot of people think that Avid is just to get students ready for a four-year college, and it is. We'd like them to take their A through G requirements so they have that option as a senior. However, we teach them all different pathways. So we talk about two-year college, trade schools, military. We have people come in and talk to all these kids about these things. So it's a great program, basically just to get these kids ready for life after high school. We also do other things, including time management, study skills, organizational skills, especially for our little freshmen coming in. They're coming in, and high school can be hard, so we teach them how to use a binder and a planner and all those great things. Avid began way back in 1980. It's a national program, and it's currently offered at 74,000 schools across the nation, and statistics show that it works. In fact, I put a paper in your little cups that show the statistics. On average, students who are in Avid fare a lot stronger than students that have not been in the program in college and so forth. So it's a really great program, and like I said, it's been around for a long time, so we know that it does work, and it's working here in Amador County. It is an elective class, and our curriculum is WICER, so Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading Skills. And although it's an elective, it's not just for our elective kids. We teach staff, PD, school-wide, at all the secondary schools so that these strategies are being used in all classrooms, in every classroom, pretty similar to UDL strategies, but just good teaching strategies. That's what Avid teaches. So it's throughout our school. Just a real quick update on Avid. So we started Avid eight years ago in 2017. Growth was a little bit slow because of COVID and everything else, but you could see right there, we started off with just seventh grade at both junior highs, and we only had 62 elective students. Today, it's in six schools, so both high schools, both junior highs, and then Pioneer and Jackson Elementary. We currently have sixth through 12th grade elective classes and 278 Avid elective students. So it has grown tremendously. We started off with only 12 Avid-trained teachers. Now we have 77, and that is just talking about teachers who went to Summer Institute that were professionally trained, because we're also at every staff meeting doing WICER training and Avid training. So those teachers, even if they haven't gone to the Summer Institute, are still being trained by myself and other people on the Avid site team. Very excitingly, in 2019, it trickled up to the high schools, and there were only 49 high school students between Amador and Argonaut. So I think it was 29 at Argonaut and 20 at Amador. And this year, we had 121 high school elective students, and next year, we're going to have 178. So it's really, really expanding, growing. We're really excited to see those numbers. And also, at Ion Junior High, they are committing next year to teaching Avid strategies in all their homeroom classes, so they're also beefing up the program there. And then, last but not least, this is just a snapshot of our high school students. And again, a lot of people think if you're going into Avid, you have to be a perfect 4.0 student. That's not true. We actually try to get students in the middle, so students that maybe need some extra support because they're first generational or low income. So we try to get those kids in there first, and then, of course, it's open to everybody after that. So this is just a snapshot of our high school students this year. Average GPA between, and this is combined for Amador and Argonaut, but average GPA was 3.6. 87% of my students had all Cs or better the first semester. 84% were first generational students, which means neither mom nor dad graduated from a four-year college. And I was surprised at our numbers in Amador County, but in Amador County, it's only like 20% of the adults in Amador County have a bachelor's degree, so our numbers tend to be pretty easy to find students that are first generational. 48% of the Avid students were from ethnically diverse backgrounds. 62% are economically disadvantaged. 80% of the Avid seniors this year have their A through G college requirements, and 100% of them applied to colleges or trade schools for optional pathways. And then, so this is exciting, my 25 seniors, or our 25 seniors, they got 51 college acceptances, which was amazing. They're also... Last year, the Avid kids earned 84,000 in scholarships, just from local scholarships. So we don't know this year because they're there tonight or next week, but they tend to do well on that as well. Overall, we had nine college visited. We visited nine colleges this year. Five of them were just on our junior overnight field trip, which was amazing. They also do community service, so we just put on the life skills prom. We do cards for seniors, treats for hospitalized children. We went up to Pioneer this year, and we helped them beautify their bathrooms and do some cleaning at their school. And then we also do the junior high school recruitment. And then seniors specifically, they get a lot of extra help with their college applications, their scholarships, and financial aid. So it's especially important for a lot of our seniors to come in if they need that extra guidance for their senior year. And I'm going to pass it on to these two amazing young people that have been in Avid, so who would like to go first?
I guess I'm going first. Okay. Is it picking up my... Whoa, that's weird. Anyways, hi, ladies, gentlemen, boys, girls, and whoever else is in the audience this evening. My name is Georgiana, or Georgie Calistini. I'm currently a junior at Argonaut High School and have been an Avid student since the sixth grade. Now, I'd like to start off with one small statement, and that is, if you were to tell sixth-grade me, a fresh transfer to Ion Junior High School, someone who couldn't even raise a hand or ask to go to the bathroom during class, that I would be speaking at a board meeting, I would probably say, are you joking? Through Ms. Hannah's Avid curriculum, from its various presentations, such as our annual career presentation, to its group activities, like Socratic seminars, I've gradually, over the years, gotten more comfortable with speaking publicly. In fact, I dare to state I believe Avid is purely the reason I am able to speak up here today. Avid pushed me to get, as a book we're reading within our classroom, like Avid pushed me to get, as a book we're reading within our classroom, likes to say, "Comfortable with the uncomfortable." Avid pushed me to present, pushed me to build bonds, and especially pushed me out of my small hermit shell. Without Avid, I wouldn't have some of the greatest friends I know. Without Avid, I would be that same scared 6th grader, unable to do as much as raise a hand. Now, I think I've done enough boasting about Avid without saying what Avid actually stands for. The Avid acronym stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. Basically, Avid prepares individuals for life outside of high school and/or middle school. Whether it be tips on college roommates, preparation for careers, or overall preparation for a college environment, Avid has it all. Avid also pushes its students to thrive for their highest potential academically. I can say this is very true, as Avid has pushed me to turn from a student who could hardly pass an easy middle school history course to someone who now takes advanced classes and is planning to apply to four-year colleges this fall, rather than my original plan of "that's future me's problem." So that's Avid's technical meaning, but to me as a student, Avid means family. Avid is a place where not only we learn and prepare our futures together, but Avid is also a place where we help each other, as well as the community. You see, annually, in late April slash early May, Avid puts together a special prom for students enrolled within Special Education. Not only this, but about once or twice a month, depending on schedules, Avid students have tutorials amongst one another in groups typically of five, and take turns asking questions and teaching one another coursework they're struggling with. With the exception of my Avid classroom, I can strongly say I've never been able to walk into a classroom and feel genuinely comfortable. The Avid classroom feels like a place without judgment, a place with no need to be perfect, a place with no need to worry. Avid is their students' biggest supporter. Students and teachers support and lift one another up, encouraging each other to be confident and take on challenges, even if that challenge is something as so simple as speaking. As you can see, Avid isn't just an organization. It isn't just a classroom. It's one big supportive family. Without Avid, I doubt I'd be here today. I'm sure I'd be in edginess, still failing every class I step into. Again, I'm Georgie Calistini. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Mamón Bigas Grisers, sorry. Good evening, Board members, Cabinet, and Mr. Critchfield. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my experience in Avid. My name is Latu Latimafasi. I'm James Marzano's nephew. Before coming into this community from Sacramento, I didn't think I would have the greatest apply for a four-year university. My grades were horrible. I lacked determination. I had no time management skills at all. And my last semester GPA before I came here was a 1.8. But when I came here and joined Avid, it taught me many time management skills. It helped with my classes, like what Georgie said, tutorials. And it taught me why I needed better grades, why I needed to apply for a scholarship, and why I needed to apply for universities. Because at my old school, I never learned anything about why I needed good grades and why I needed to graduate, and why a higher education is a good thing or not. I was surrounded by gang violence, drugs, and just a horrible community in general. And I never learned why I should be a better person in school. I just was surrounded by the wrong people. Avid taught me how to keep my grades from dropping from a 2.0. My lowest grade when I came here was a 3, or lowest GPA was a 3.3, and I've been having 3.5 and 3.6 other than that. And without Avid, I wouldn't be able to attend Grand Canyon University. Through Avid, Grand Canyon came in, presented why I should join their college/university. And I really liked it because it was a Christian school, and it was affordable as well, and I liked their community. They flew me out during the summer for free, and I was able to see their campus and community. It also gave me a chance to see other colleges as well for field trips. We went to Santa Cruz for my junior field trip, and we visited UC Davis, St. Mary's, and other colleges. I really liked seeing it in person instead of reading about it online and having to imagine what it would feel like being on campus. It helped, Avid continually helped my stress and struggles with my classes as well. Ms. Hannah especially would let me sit in the back and miss all of her classwork to be able to focus on math, science, and history and other classes, while being able to give me time for classwork in her class as well. And I'm very grateful for Ms. Hannah and Avid, what they've done for me. So in closing, I think Avid has helped me as a person grow and understand why education is important, and other Avid students. Thank you.
That's Avid.
So I learned a long time ago with electives, there are two aspects to an elective class. You have the content itself that can draw people in, but even more importantly is the teacher. And notice she didn't give herself any credit, but Mrs. Hannah deserves a ton of credit for all that growth in Avid. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys. Great job. Ms. Tedegaard? No? Okay. Okay, all right. I really enjoyed that. There was a lot of great stuff that just happened. I know that was long, but that was some really good stuff. We're going to move on to our employee organizations. I know in the sea of people, I did see Ms. Jensen.
Wow, that's what we do. That's why we do it. That was beautiful. Good evening, members of the School Board, Superintendent Critchfield, Cabinet, colleagues, and community members. I am Jeanne Jensen, speaking to you as the President of the Amador County Teachers Association. As we enter Teacher Appreciation Week and begin winding down the school year, I want to take a moment to reflect not only on the hard work of our educators, but on what this time of year represents. In education, the end of the year is not just a finish line, it is a culmination. Every day, every lesson, every extra hour spent planning, supporting, and encouraging students, this is the long preparation. The entire year builds toward now, and while much attention is placed on our state testing window, these scores are not isolated moments. They are echoes of every moment of support, every ounce of expertise, and every act of dedication our teachers have poured into their students. Teachers give everything they have to prepare students, not just for tests, but for life. But when our classrooms go without updated curriculum, when intervention staff are stretched too thin, when class sizes grow and supports shrink, the outcome is felt most by our students. And yes, it shows up in the data. State test scores are often treated as a snapshot of student ability, but they are more accurately a mirror, reflecting how well we've supported our schools all year. If resources have gone unfilled or delayed, if staff has been spread too thin, then we've undercut the very outcomes we say we value. So during Teacher Appreciation Week, let's not just say thank you, let's say it by committing to the support systems that help teachers do their job and help students reach their potential. Every day of the school year is preparation. Every staff member is part of that effort, and our outcomes, academic, social, and emotional, are only as strong as the foundation we've built together. Let's ensure next year our support matches our expectations and start from day one. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have CSCA 239. I don't see Mr. Baird or anybody here. Okay, so we will go on. We do have one public comment on non-agenda items, so I will go ahead and read. "A person wishing to be heard by the Board shall first be recognized by the President and shall then proceed to comment as briefly as the subject permits. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the Board on non-agenda items. The Board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With Board consent, the Board President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and number of persons wishing to be heard. The President may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask the additional person to speak only if they have something new to add." So we have, and forgive me, is it Nika Esti? Okay.
Good evening, members of the Board, Cabinet, Superintendent Critchfield. I really first am going to say thanks for the printer, because my printer at home didn't work, so now I have to read off my phone, and I'm a little upset about that. My name is Nika Esti and I teach 4th grade at Jackson Elementary. I appreciate you allowing me to speak here tonight. I have a question for the Board and Cabinet about staffing at Jackson Elementary, and Ion Elementary, but I'm sure it applies to other schools as well. I'm wondering how we can continue to justify only having a single administrator with the number of students that we have. I don't want this to sound like our principals aren't doing their job, or like this is a personal attack on them, because it's not. Katrina Ramos at Jackson is so dedicated and brings so much stuff to the table that we did not have before, on top of just her genuine joy to be at work every day. What I think you need to hear is that for sometimes two full days and another half-day, Katrina Ramos is in meetings. So when I need an administrator, when a student needs an administrator, you don't have one. We don't have one. She's in meetings. She cannot be in two places at one time. I do believe the same thing is happening at Ion Elementary as well. She is in meetings for IEPs, SSTs, 504s on Monday afternoons. She's at administrator meetings at the district office. We literally don't have an administrator. Having a teacher in charge kind of cracks me up a little bit, because that person is teaching. They can't be an administrator at the same time. We have a campus supervisor, which has been helpful with certain things, but because they are not credentialed staff, they can't attend those meetings, they can't do any discipline, they can't have one-on-one meetings with students. So those are all things that Ms. Ramos has to do for us. Students need an administrator, teachers need an administrator every single day, five days a week. We continue to experience increasing behaviors amongst our students. It's also the spring, so it's a little special as well. It's a concern among our union members, among staff members, and we are trying to figure out how to make classrooms safe and have the support that we need to keep our students learning. It is not fair to students, teachers, and classified staff to be without an administrator for two and a half days a week. I read online today, which I was very intrigued by, that the national average for the ratio for students to administrators is 252 to 1. We have 477 students today at Jackson Elementary. Ion has well over 500. I don't know the number. That's a lot more than 252. There also was an assistant principal at Jackson Junior High School, and we got the 6th graders gifted to us with no additional support, and that position was dissolved. So I believe they're at just under 300 at Jackson Junior High, and they also only have one administrator. Is that my time? Yes. Oh, okay.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we are going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Were there any questions or comments about this item? Ken, any questions? Shane? James?
I had no questions.
I did not have any questions either, so we would just need a motion for consent.
I move to approve item 12, the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, and then just a roll call vote. Ken?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
James?
Aye.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, moving on to item 13, communications. We do not have any. So we will move on to 14, our action items. Number one is the Amador County Unified School District's audit report for 2324 with Mr. Norton.
Good evening, Board. I'm here tonight to present a summary of the audit report for the Amador County Unified School District for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. That was ended almost a year ago now. The audit was conducted by Christie White LLC, and as you know, this is an annual requirement for the district, with this report being completed on March 30, 2025. Normally, the annual reports are due to the state and need to be completed by December 15. Our prior audit to this one was delayed due to staffing shortages with our prior auditors, and that's kind of pushed us back behind the schedule. On the plus side, this year, we are currently actively undergoing our site testing next week, and we have then our interim testing the second week of June. So we will be hopefully rolling through our next audit here and get us right back on time. We are back on the schedule we should be on, so I would anticipate us being right there this next year. At this time, I want to call out that each audit is really a combined effort. I want to express my appreciation for the collaborative effort of the business office, my direct staff, but not only them, the district office staff as well, as well as our school sites, the front office. We ask a lot of folks to compile a lot of different information together to get these reports ready to go on a timely manner. And sometimes, we get last-minute requests from auditors too, and folks have been gracious to turn it around without complaint. So it's been a really good combined effort that we've seen. And as is standard, the audit was performed in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles, otherwise known as GAAP, as well as the government auditing standards. These standards ensure that we are following the highest professional guidelines in our financial reporting. And I am pleased to report that the audit resulted in an unmodified opinion of the financial statements. Essentially, this means that the auditor concluded that our financial statements are presented fairly in all material aspects in accordance with GAAP. So some financial highlights, and note, this is a reflection of what has already taken place from this prior year. We've already discussed it to a degree with our unaudited actuals, so this is just a snapshot here. But as you'll see, our overall general fund revenue was at $62 million, with our expenditures at $65 million, resulting in the district deficit spending, which we've touched on before. General fund ending balance decreased by the 3.8, resulting in the fund balance of around $8 million. And of that $8 million, our restricted fund balance decreased to $3.2 million, which we've discussed before. So areas of note, looking at long-term liability. They increased to $54 million this last year. It's a 7% increase. And a large part of this, just to not want to be deceptive, is due to our net pension liability. In simple terms, the net pension liability represents the difference between the total pension obligation we have to our employees and the assets that have been set aside to pay for those obligations. This liability essentially is an estimate of future financial obligations that the district has to employees for their retirement benefits. It's calculated based on factors like employee salaries, years of service, expected future investment returns of the pension fund itself, so this is Cal Pers and Cal Sturs. And this generally fluctuates from year to year. This is really all a culmination of actuarial studies that the state retirement programs do. But it's important to understand that while this is a liability, it doesn't mean the district has to pay this entire amount all at once. And you can see this, the significant percentage that it does have of our total liabilities here. And it really shows the full financial picture of all school districts, so you'll see a very similar thing when you look at other districts' audits and things like that. But one thing to note as well with our long-term liabilities, there is an omission that you will see that is not included on here, which is the COP. And so that wasn't an omission that was brought to the auditors, so they are actually working on a revised version currently. So there will be another version coming, but I wanted to present this because we have some more topics to discuss that we wanted to get out in front of more than anything There also were economic factors that are included in this, essentially with any... There also were economic factors that are included in this. Essentially, with any audit report, you're going to see kind of the picture of the landscape. These are all things we've already kind of touched on before, so I'm not really going to go into great detail. But the declining enrollment trends, revenue uncertainties, the underfunded pension liability, economic downturns, and just uncertainty currently in the market. So what I wanted to get to were the audit findings and the corrective action plans that go along with them. So the report did find two, the first one being attendance reporting. This was something we've already discussed to a degree with our second interim when we noted that there was an error in our P2 reporting from the prior year, which resulted in lower ATA and LCFF revenue. The effect of this error is resulting in $637,000 fiscal impact that will likely impact our next fiscal year. I say likely because there's a chance it does hit our current. But as a standard, it just depends on the CDE of when they get through the process of basically analyzing the findings and then applying them. The way that the impact will hit is through a reduced apportionment payment that we would get from the state, resulting from the overstated ADA from the prior year. So this impact will be reflected as a note when the budget adoption happens in June. So with that, whenever you have any finding, there was a corrective action plan put in place right away. Once discovered, we immediately began to put that corrective action plan in place. So one thing that we've added in here was a preemptive auditor review. So really, before the submission even goes to the state, we've actually asked the auditors to look into it, and they already have. So in this case, we just completed our P2 for this year, and so they've already reviewed it and had noted it looks good. So we should be good there. We've also implemented what is called variance testing. So what this is, is it basically looks not only at the current year, but we're going to look back at the prior year's P2 as well as our P1 reporting for ADA. And if you see any stark anomalies, so obviously if it increases by a lot, it decreases by a lot, it's going to flag. And so that helps paint the picture of if we're overstating, it will probably flag to some degree at that point. So it just provides us an extra safety valve to really analyze the data a little bit further. In addition to enhanced controls, dual verification of ADA figures to ensure there's not even a keystroke error that could come into play, something to that degree. And then additional staff training, so that way all the reporting that then comes through from the site level all the way up, there is additional training involved. So that's set to take place prior to next fiscal year or within the first month of the school year, starting as staff start to get on board. So these additional steps should help us ensure that we don't see this finding again. And like I noted before, we've now submitted our P2 for this year, and the auditors already reviewed it and said it looks good. So finding number two is the ratio of administrative employees to teachers. The district decided the allowable ratio of administrative employees and teachers. This is actually a repeat finding from the prior year, and it was actually even noted when we had the last year audit that this was likely to come up again. The reason being is by the time this, because I noted before our audit was delayed last year, by the time this finding came up, we were almost done with the last year. So at that point, it was too late to make any changes or make any adjustments. The question cost associated with that is 97,74. And it would also likely hit into next fiscal year as well for the same reasons as I stated in the first finding. So as with the prior finding, once discovered, the district worked to implement a corrective action plan, and I can report that this will actually not be a finding in this current fiscal year. We've already done the calculations to determine that. And as a part of this corrective action plan, what we do is essentially a review of our current staffing ratios from January to March as those position determinations are being made. So that way, if we're even close to it, we'll be able to analyze that and determine it well in advance, so we can make any adjustments that are necessary for the next year. So this current year, we look good, and next year, we are in compliant as of this moment. So in conclusion, with regards to this, the audit noted no material weaknesses in our internal controls or financial reporting, and that there are not anything in noncompliance with any laws, regulations, contracts, or grants, agreements, et cetera. In addition, each finding has been addressed with the corrective action plan established, and systems are in place to ensure compliance going forward. Please note that this audit report is essentially a report of what has happened before, as I discussed. So therefore, you're essentially approving the audit report is accepting the audited snapshot of our financials from the prior fiscal year. With that, at this time, I recommend the board approve the audit report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, acknowledging the pending adjustment coming with regards to the COP and the long-term liability adjustment. And then I'm available for any questions the board has with regards to this.
So the shortfall of 3.8 million, do we add the 637,000 to that for, that's our total?
In reality, in that fiscal year, it would have been, yes. But what will end up happening is it'll be an adjustment that'll likely take place in the '25, '26 year.
You also need to consider that we had COVID monies that came in. So the revenue for those COVID monies was realized in a prior year and then spent out later. You can only claim your revenue in one particular year. So part of that deficit, a big portion of that deficit was having to do with spending down the COVID monies that had expiration dates.
Yeah, and that was part of the reason for the significantly higher ending fund balance at that point in time the year prior.
Okay, any other questions, Ken? Shane, did you have any questions or comments? James?
Can you explain what you just said again? We had to spin down.
So there were multiple rounds, no, go ahead.
No, I'm still trying to process what you said.
Okay, so there were multiple rounds of COVID relief funds, also, you know, how is it just like, you know, education recovery monies, learning block grants, all these other things. And so what happened with those is the monies would all come in, for many of them, all the money would come in. But then you had multiple years to spend it down. So what would happen is you claim that revenue in year one, but you don't spend it all. So then in the next year, when you look at reports like this, it's only looking at a single year. So the revenue already had come in, you're not claiming it. So if revenue came in in '22, '23, and you didn't spend it, then you have a surplus in '23, '24, you spend that, and it appears to be a deficit, but that was money that was use it or lose it money. And so that, since COVID, we've had that happen over multiple years where money comes in, you have multiple years to spend it down. So you get one year where the revenues look good compared to expenses, and then you get multiple years where it's flipped because now you're spending down that revenue.
Help me understand if I'm picking up what you're putting down, because it sounds like that with everything that was explained just now, I would kind of be predicting this down the road. No?
Predicting what?
This to happen?
Yeah, I mean, showing the deficit.
This was going to happen.
Yeah, the deficit spending, and when I was CBO, I talked about that multiple times about how you're going to claim the revenue only once, and then the spend down is going to happen over multiple years. And so then it, you know, it gives, if you look at a single year snapshot, then it can look like, well, where'd that money come from? Why'd you spend that? Well, the money came in in a prior year.
And the COVID money forced us to be in this situation, is what you're saying?
Well, that's just the way they structured many of those, as they called them, grants, coming out of COVID, where it would be an apportionment, and then you, all of them had different deadlines, but they, pretty much all of them were multi-year grants, where you didn't spend it all in the year it came in, you had multiple years to spend it down.
Okay, and is it typical for those grants to put us in situations like this all the time?
Well, I mean, we're now seeing that slow down, right? We're spending down our last.
To happen?
Well, that's, we've spent down our last COVID grant, correct?
Correct, it will be spent down officially at the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah.
And some of the other ones had deadlines that were sooner than this fiscal year, so they would have had to have been spent down in the prior years.
Okay, so just to clarify, I know what you're talking about. I think I get what your question is, is that, just to make sure that I'm hearing this correctly, we got it funded one, one single time, but we were required to spend it over multiple years. So in our budget here, it's not showing that we actually had the money, but it's showing that we spent money that we didn't have, but we actually had.
So we have it, but you see it lives in the fund balance? So at the very top line, you see a $12 million figure.
Right.
So that's where essentially the COVID funds had lived at that point.
Okay.
So you're then basically spending that down, that's why there's a deficit spent, and then you see the bottom ending fund balance is down to eight. So that's, we basically banked the funds to spend it out over multiple years, and then this is the spend down of it.
Okay. Okay. And then when we're talking about, if you go back to the previous one, we're talking about our attendance thing and the administrator thing where we're looking at almost, I don't know, close to almost 800,000, it looks like, on stuff, combined fees, stuff. How? How are we paying that back? Does that just come out of our funding? Are we having to pay this out, pay this back? How does that work?
Generally, it comes from the apportionments, so we get apportionments from the state just about on a monthly basis. So what it would be is our LCFF revenue is X, they would basically reduce it by that amount. And so in one of the payments, they usually would reduce it from one payment specifically.
Okay, so for example, just to like pair this down with numbers that I'm, okay, we're working with. If we were supposed to get $100 and we owed them $20, they would only give us 80?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments before? And this, when we're approving this, this is already, this all has already happened?
Yeah, this is already taking place. We really can't change it. It's just acknowledging that this is our audit.
This is what the audit report is, okay.
And I want to commend Robert and his team on working on this. As you remember, we, our auditor prior to Christie White, E. Bailey, we got woefully behind on our audits. They were claiming like everybody, short staffing and all that, and so then the board made the decision to switch to Christie White. So the '22, '23 audit was way behind, and now the '23, '24 audit is only about six months behind. And they are on track for our current year, '24, '25, which is almost done. It ends in June 30, where it will be completed on time. In my experience with auditors, that is incredibly impressive for them to get us back on time that quickly, to basically do three audit reports in less than two years, is what Christie White is able to produce. And so that, that's been huge, to be able to get back on track. And so then, Robert, the next one, we anticipate he'll present, and it will be on time, and not something that occurred almost a full year ago, is what we're talking about, a fiscal year that ended June 30 of 2024.
Okay, now, I did have one other question. So when we're talking about this ratio of administrative employees to teachers, and we have the question cost, which is 97, almost 98,000, but I had received something the year before where it was $25,000. So we have now tripled, almost quadrupled in cost for that because of the increased fines, or?
It's a combination of a few different things. The way the calculation is done is based on how much other state revenue you have in combination to how far you are over. So because there was more revenue and increased percentage, that's what led to the increased amounts.
Okay. Okay, and then when, just really quickly, when do we plan to have the updated audit with the COP included on it? Is there a timeline for that at all?
I don't have an estimate from the auditors. My assumption is though, they'll want to turn it around pretty quick.
Sure.
I would like to think by the next board meeting, we could probably have it as an item there.
Okay. Does anybody else have any further questions or comments? Okay, then we would just need a motion for this item.
I move that we approve item 14.1, Amador County Unified School District's audit report for 2324.
I'll second.
Okay, Molly? Yes, Ken?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
James?
Aye.
I'm also a yes. Okay, item 14.2, public notice waiver request with Dr. Palas Belos.
Good evening, trustees. What's before you are, the first one is the waiver request for Carmen Travascas. Carmen Travascas performs service for us as a career technical education in the culinary side over at Amador High School. We learned recently through our audit with the state of California that the career technical education teachers do not receive English learner authorization until they have completed their clear credential. She is on track to complete her clear credential in the future. However, in order to make sure that we stay compliant with the state, they've recommended a variable term waiver, which is attached to the document, and it would provide the variable term waiver with English learner authorization for this employee for the 2024, 2025 school year. The second individual, I'm going to go ahead and talk about both of them since they're both together, is Jacob Giddy. He's our career technical education teacher that is split between Amador and Argonaut High School, and he's in the same circumstance. His program of study, their career technical education credential, doesn't give you the English learner authorization until they have completed their clear credential. Both of them hold preliminaries, which allows them to be in the classroom. However, according to the state guidelines, the preliminary does not provide or does not satisfy the EL, English learner authorization requirement. And so recommending approval for both of these variable term waivers, one for Travascas, the other for Giddy.
Okay, questions or comments on this?
So what is the timeframe for them to get the English learner certification? Is that in the next year, or it sounded kind of open-ended?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Far. So ultimately, it comes down to when they complete the requirements for their clear credential in their program. So as soon as they, as soon as they've achieved that milestone, upon receiving their clear credential, they will be considered, they'll authorize to teach English learners in the state.
So will that be in the next year, or are we going to see them again next year?
For both, for both of them, they will be within the next 12 to 24 months. It really depends on their program, so until they get it, you could expect another available term waiver request in the future. Great question.
Any other questions on this? Okay, because this is personnel, Molly will hold off on a vote. Not, I'm not forgetting about you, I promise. James, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, okay, then we would just need a vote, a motion on this.
I'll move to approve agenda item 2A and B. The ACUSD, oh no, wait, public notice waiver request, Dr. Palas Belos' presentation.
A second.
Okay, and then the vote, Ken?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
James?
Aye.
I'm also a yes.
Thank you, trustees.
Okay, we're moving on to item 15, discussion items. We don't have any, so we're going to go on to our board policy updates.
Just a little light reading.
Yes.
So as was this.
As was discussed last board meeting, we were woefully behind in our board policies and them being up to date. And as part of our revamping of how we have the board approve our board policies, it will be the common practice to bring board policies forward as a first reading and discussion-only item, and then at it, almost always at the next board meeting, that item or items would then be brought back for approval. I also got all head nods that I noticed of having board policies be its own separate section. So it could be a mixture of discussion and action depending on the circumstances, which is what we see tonight. So item number one is an action item. Item number two is discussion only, because item number one, all of those board policies were on the agenda last meeting, and so they went through that first reading process. So this is what we refer to as a global adoption. The goal would be that we don't do anything like this again, where we have so many policies at once. But we are recommending approval of all of the changes to the series and the zeros, the 1000s, 2000s, 3000s, and 9000s. And then obviously, we're happy to answer any questions, but we'll ask that we focus on 16.1 first, and then we'll move to 16.2.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments they want to talk about on 16.1, the ones that we did the first reading of last time?
So my only question would be, as far as status for each item, there's either, it says draft, keep CSBA, or draft, CSBA. What are the differences between those three?
So it's a little bit, it's a little bit convoluted in the way that CSBA system does it. If it says just keep CSBA, it's because we didn't make any real substantive changes to it. If it's more in the draft status, then we made changes, or the ed code it's based on asks us to fill in sections, or they provide you with a couple of different routes you can go with the board policy, and then we make that recommendation accordingly. But it was all done, their system now is all done via online, and so each of our departments went in and either went with CSBAs or made changes as needed to fit Amador County.
Okay, so keep CSBA and CSBA would be the same thing?
Essentially, yeah.
Shane, any questions on these? Okay, James?
No questions.
Okay, Molly, any questions? No? Okay, with that, then we would just need a motion for this, this first set of policies.
I move to approve item 16.1, global adoption of board policies.
Second.
Okay, and then the vote. Okay, and then the vote, Molly? Yes. Ken?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
James?
That's A through E, correct?
Yes, A three.
Hi.
And I'm also a yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to item two, the global adoption of board policies, first reading, the seven thousand series with facilities.
Originally, we had planned to have the four thousand series and the seven thousand series for our first reading tonight. Our four thousand series is actually up to date. So that's why you don't see that and you won't see that at a future board meeting. We have one more block of board policies. And so again, this is for discussion only. We can, happy to answer any questions tonight. We would, we will see at our next board meeting, the seven thousand series up for approval as an action item. And then the other policies outside of the four thousands that have not yet been seen by the board will be a discussion only on June eleventh. And then we do have board meetings back to back weeks in June. So then on June eighteenth, that would be for approval. And so that would get all of our board policies up to date, just in time for the latest CSBA recommended updates. And then we'll go and start updating board policies in much more manageable blocks of board policies. So if there's any questions on the seven thousand series, we're happy to to answer those or bring answers back at the next meeting if we can't get them to you tonight.
Okay, does anybody have any discussion? For this?
No.
No?
I have a question. The seven thousands, just looking at, they are facilities.
Yeah, it's all facilities based.
Engineering services, engineering services, things like that. Seventy-one forties, policies and regulations, it's, it says, and these are, and going into them because of my concern for the last ones, and I believe the word was, these are living documents, they can be changed. Would these seven thousands be something that we would have to go through regarding the C word?
With consolidation?
Yeah.
Potentially, but I would say that I, none of these policies are just going to create a situation that I would find problematic with consolidation. They're, they're just in accordance with what's laid out in law and how you, you know, you approve facilities. And so we still need board votes on, on any project we go out to bid on and things like that. If it's discovered that there's a board policy that might be problematic, then that would be something we would need to re, bring back for review. I don't see any issue with the ones as, as written.
Okay. But these two are living documents and can be.
Absolutely, yeah.
Flipped based on our community, like you said with the other one.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not all, you know, community based, right? We have, most of these are, have to be in alignment with specific education and labor codes, right? And then there's some flexibility within that. But, you know, so much of this is actually just a reflection of, of the education code.
Any other questions or discussion on this? It's the first reading, so we will bring it back for more next time also.
No questions.
Okay, good. All right, with that then, we will move on to seven, item seventeen, our reports. Mr. Crichfield?
Yes, I do have a handful of updates tonight. Thank you. So first, I want to acknowledge, I know there have been questions about consolidation update, knowing that board member, member Gail was not going to attend tonight. I felt it was important to have all five board members present. It will be a discussion item, consolidation will be a discussion item at our next board meeting on June eleventh. I also want to comment that we have been working on the updated sections of the draft environmental impact report for traffic, hydrology and biology. Traffic and biology are complete and we're in the review process. Hydrology is the one that has taken us the longest when you're dealing with old facilities, tracking down plans for water lines and sewer lines and all the other things that go along, along with that has, has proved to be a challenge. We are on track at this point for a late June opening of the public comment window of the draft DIR. We already did one public comment window for the draft DIR and then from our recommendation and the board's recommendation, we decided to, to bolster up some of these sections. So the, the draft DIR that will come out late June will not be the entire environmental impact report. It will only be the sections that have received substantive changes. Because the, and that's not the entire report. So these sections in particular, and then they impact a couple of other sections. Those will be circulated for the forty-five day window and everything else. And we'll, we'll talk about that more on June eleventh, but I at least wanted to get that out there because I know people have been asking, when is the draft DIR going to be ready? And right now it's tracking for late June, for the, for that window to be open. Also, I am excited to announce we, we had our first meeting yesterday, led by Nikki Gravette, our Director of CTE and Director of Secondary Education with our graduation requirements committee. As was discussed back when the board approved ethnic studies, we talked about how our, our graduation requirements for high school have not been looked at since twenty eighteen. A lot has changed since twenty eighteen. And so we had a group of department chairs and other leaders. It was, it was an awesome group of teachers yesterday. I was there for the first portion of the meeting led by Nikki. We plan on having a recommendation to the board in November of this coming year. So they'll have a series of meetings. We wanted to kick it off before the school year let out to kind of get everybody's brains going on ideas on where we should head, looking at other districts, looking at state requirements. And then they'll pick things up again in August and, and hope to have a recommendation to the board for potential changes to our grad requirements in November. And also want to acknowledge that it is May and we have had, we have so much going on this month at all of our campuses, the culmination of open houses and scholarship nights and academic award events and graduations and promotions to plan. And, and all the different end of year assemblies and activities and talent shows, whatever. We were at Amador today. Ken and Kayla and I were for a boardwalk. And at one point, Mr. Kegel said, if you come to Amador in the late afternoon or evening, something's probably going on in the month of May, pretty much any day. And so that's what, what it feels like. And then since Peyton is not here, I also want to highlight, she is one of our star tennis players on the Amador tennis team. They are the number one overall seed in the playoffs. And so they have a home match tomorrow at four PM. And everyone, of course, it's a public event, is welcome to attend. They were section champions last year and they're the number one overall seed. So hopefully going for the repeat, which is pretty exciting for our Amador High tennis team. So our student board member Peyton is one of the players on the team. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then of course, highlight teacher appreciation week. Hard to encapsulate how important our teachers are in a short statement. Just truly appreciate all of our teachers, everything they do. I have my own children attend school here for a reason. They do an amazing job and I appreciate them. And all of our employees, as we do employee appreciation for our classified employees as well during the month of May and just want to express my, my thanks to them. And the next time we meet, graduations will have already occurred. So I wish our secondary schools the best of luck. As I know from firsthand experience, planning graduations and promotions is a ton of work. And so I'm, I'm excited for those events that they have in store for us that first week of June. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Molly?
Yes, so right now it is AP testing at Argonaut and Amador. I know a lot of students have been anxiously waiting that to begin and definitely end. So it began on May sixth and it'll end May sixteenth. As for ASB, we just partnered with, I believe it's pronounced Vitalent to host our first blood drive. So we had ASB students assisting their employees and it went really well. It was in our gym and I think we had around fifty or fifty-five donors. So that was really exciting. And then we've also been planning our last day fun day and our walkout rally, which is like our end of the year celebration. We, last year we had bounce houses and food trucks and stuff just for students to celebrate the last day of school. Additionally, right now our school has been really into spike ball. So we have been having spike ball tournaments at lunch and it's just a fun way to enjoy the warm weather and have everyone have fun at lunch. And then additionally, scholarship night is May fourteenth. So students, seniors are getting invitations to that still. And so that will be next week, next Wednesday. So it'll just be a time to celebrate our accomplished seniors. And so that's been really exciting. And then most of our spring sports are either completely wrapped up or beginning playoffs. So we're just enjoying the warm weather and looking forward to graduation.
Awesome. Ken?
So in the last week, I've had the opportunity to do sight walks of both Argonaut and Amador. And that's all spike ball being played. But I just, both campuses were very impressive. I was impressed with how clean they were, how orderly the classrooms seemed, how engaged the teachers seem to be with the students. So that was very good to see. Also very impressed with what's happened at the, tonight's meeting. All the students with their community hours, giving back. You like to see that. Beyond impressed with the avid presentation. That's the first I've ever heard of it. And I'm very thankful it exists. And young man, that was a very good story you told us and you should be proud of yourself. So thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Shane?
I also want to mention the, the site visit at Argonaut that I was able to attend with Ken. And it just, it really shows how there's a lot of great teachers throughout the district. And just want to, again, say how much I appreciate all the teachers, all the hard work that they put in to, to do what they can to help our students. With that being said, I would like to get some type of update as far as, we had a teacher here tonight mentioning the, the staff shortages for the, I guess, administration. I would like to get some type of update as far as where, what, what sites are, there are needs and I guess what, what our plan is to make sure that, that our, our, our teachers aren't pulling double, double duty and possibly compromising their teaching duties. That's all.
Okay, thank you. James?
I don't have much to report. I did schedule boardwalks, but unfortunately I had to miss them due to a surgery that I had on my foot last week. I, I do also want to express gratitude for all the teachers within the district. I've had kids at every level in this district for seems like forever now, but many years. And I feel and my family feels and has always felt that the teachers and the school and the school community take part in raising our kids. They're, they're right there with us, trying to, I mean, there's one in the room right now who's been with all of my children. And, and I love and appreciate her along with all the others and I hope you guys enjoy your summer and thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, like we said, we went on a couple of site visits. I was able to go to Center Creek Primary and Elementary and then at Amador today with Ken. Same thing. I mean, the end of the year is a tough, it's a tough cookie when you're getting to the end of the year. And so the appreciation for the teachers and staff sticking it out, doing what they can, getting everybody kind of across that finish line to take a breather in the summer is, it's a big undertaking and that's super appreciative. I loved, this was one of my favorite board meetings. I think I love seeing all of the students getting out in the community. I'm a firm believer that, you know, giving back, getting out in the community, doing other things besides just school when you're in high school is a big part of becoming a well-rounded individual and adult. So that's, I love seeing all that. There was a ton of kids and there was even more that weren't even here. Seeing that. And I'm hoping that we can kind of come up with some creativity in the future in regards to, I've, I've heard, I've talked to a lot of teachers lately just about student discipline and stuff. And that is always such a a tough situation to navigate when you've got ed code and the fine line you can walk with what you can do and cannot do in regards to discipline. And helping those kids, supporting the teachers at the same time, all of those things. It's a really, I feel like it's much more complex issue than we than it seems sometimes. And so I'm looking forward to kind of hoping that we can come up with some creative solutions to, to get us through once, next year and get that started. But overall, I think that we're, I like what I see and I'm super appreciative for all the staff and teachers going forward. Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
So I forgot to mention that I also visited Pioneer and Pine Grove with Patty and it's very interesting to see the relationships that our teachers form with our children. I mean, we were, every classroom we walked into, kids were coming up and trying to give Patty hugs and stuff like that. Patty used to be the principal up there. And it's amazing, you know, it's also the number of hats that people in our district wear, you know, Jeannie's the act of president as well as a teacher and walking in her classroom and seeing her engage with the children. It just tells you how much the people in this county care about the children and what they're doing. I mean, sometimes it might seem like there's some infighting going on, but overall, I think the main objective is to make sure the kids are getting the learning experience they need to. I appreciate seeing that.
I agree. Thanks, Ken. Okay, we, our next meeting is going to be here on June eleventh. So again, after graduation, so we won't see everybody until after then. And so with that, we are adjourned. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move right into the, the county meeting. Have a good night. Peter is not here, but everybody else is. We're getting a signature here, so we'll just give one second. No, you're totally fine. Yeah. Yeah, as we speak, in action, here we have. Perfect. It is important. It's documented on camera that you were here, so it should qualify. Yeah, it is. Okay, so again, the meeting is called to order. We do have four bed, board members here. Peter is not here tonight. Are there any deletions or corrections to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, we don't have any presentations or recognitions. I do not see, my computer keeps. What was that? Okay, and we do not have any members from the employee organizations. And it doesn't look like I have any public comments on non-agenda items. So that brings us to our consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on consent? Okay, then we would just need a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, and then the roll call vote. Ken? Shane?
Yes.
James?
Hi.
I'm also a yes. Okay, we do not have any communications. That brings us to our action items. Amador County Office of Education Audit Report for twenty-three, twenty-four with Mr. Norton.
Okay, board, this is a companion item to the district. This is the audit report for the County Office of Education. The introduction is the same as before. It was completed on March thirty, twenty twenty-five, extension approved by the state. The financial highlights, a little different on this side. The beginning fund balance not quite as, as high. But you will see on this side of the house, revenues did exceed expenditures. This was mentioned at the unaudited actuals as to why this happened. This was, we had an audit with the Medi-Cal billing. We actually had, as they would say, a bank error in your favor monopoly to where we had basically an extra million dollars that came in that we were not expecting because the audit finding was that they underpaid us. So that was a, a nice surprise to, to see on that audit report.
Do, do we know what item that was for?
It's, it was just over the course of the billing that we were doing for our Medi-Cal services that were being provided. They were essentially not fulfilling the full value of what it was. So it was basically an audit that went back and said, oh, wow, we should have been actually giving you additional dollars for this service that was being provided.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I haven't. That, that's fine. That's good. Thank you.
Uh, so you'll see the fund balance here grow from the one year to the next. Similarly, on the county side, what makes up our long-term liabilities is that net pension liability. Don't want to really go into too much more detail here. It is significant. There was no COP on this side, so this audit is the audit. There is going to be a slight adjustment in this year's audit reflective of this prior one, but it's not something that's significant enough to, to warrant a change. Essentially those finance purchases you see for two forty-seven. Uh, essentially those finance purchases you see for two forty-seven, um, there were two buses that we had back in twenty-twenty-two that were totaled. And so it actually reduced the amount of that liability that's sitting there on the books at that time. Um, but when the auditors, they did not catch that adjustment, so it is being revised. Um, it was a little nuanced in the way it was presented, so um, that will be reduced down to about one sixty. Um, so it's a little bit different, but it's still not enough to warrant a revision in this audit. But something to call out for you guys. Audit factor, or sorry, the economic factors here were not anything of note from, the difference from the other side of the house. Um, on the county, it's great news, no findings here. Um, that's always nice to see. Um, and similarly, uh, no material weaknesses or non-compliance were found. Um, and our financial statements were presented fairly and in accordance with the accounting principles as noted before. So I'm available for any questions you have. Um, but at this time, I would recommend that the board uh approve the county audit.
I think it's important to note too that the uniqueness of Amador County being one of only seven single district counties, that they have the pleasure of doing everything twice, right? And so while there's so many things interconnected, we have one business office. And so all of the employees, starting with Robert on down, are providing functions for both the district and the county office. And just like with everything else, having to do two audits is a heavy lift. And so uh, this is a, you know, significant to have an audit without any findings. So I just want to express my appreciation to them.
And that's a ton of work, so commend the, the business office for sure. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments on this audit report?
Robert, your office must uh go through a lot of pencils and lead when you're doing all this, cause it, I mean, it's a lot of work.
It is, it's a lot of compiling and it's a reflective too of the work that goes into it in advance. Um, throughout the year, you know, we require a lot of documents and signatures and scanning and all this, and it's to be collated and filed correctly. Cause when the audit comes around, if it's not, you're doing almost double and triple the work of what you did before. So it's important that we follow those processes and procedures and they're doing a great job. Uh, and even right now, not only we're doing our next year audit, we're currently working on a FICMAT audit uh to go along on top of it. Um, and that one, we're trying to turn around the documentation in a week for the in-service uh interviews next week. So it's a fun time while we're, you know, working on next year's budget uh and the third interim, so um, not much.
Robert, how many people are in your office?
Uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people and then eight, including myself. Oh, nine, actually, sorry.
Okay, that's a lot of work for nine people, so I'm, it's a lot of work. And so thank you. That is, that is a lot, and especially to come up when you have all this stuff and no findings is a big deal, so good, thank you.
Always a win.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, any other questions or comments on this before we, would need a motion? Okay, then we're just looking for a motion.
Move to approve item ten point one, the Amador County Office of Education Audit Report for twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, and then the vote, Ken?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
James?
Aye.
And I'm also a yes. All right, we will move on to our board policy update section. Um, Jared?
Yeah, so this is a companion to item sixteen point one on the board side. This is eleven point one, these are the same policies and we have it on the same cadence as the district. And so these, uh, in eleven point one, these policies were presented last board meeting as discussion, and so now they're up for approval. And we recommend approval.
Okay, did anybody have um any further discussion for these ones? Okay, then once again, these ones would just need approval or a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item eleven uh dash one, A through E, uh, board policy updates.
Second.
Okay, and then the vote, Ken?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
James?
Aye.
I'm also a yes. And then item two?
Yeah, so ditto for item eleven point two, uh, seven thousands facilities. Uh, just as a quick reminder, we do, we do need to acknowledge, we, the county office does own facilities. Um, they sit on district land, but we do have buildings that are part of the County Office of Education, so we need to make sure we have facilities policies up to date as well.
Okay. Um, and again, these ones are just our first read, so we can also discuss these um at the next board meeting. And then like we had discussed in the district meeting, we can bring any policy back that we would like to review. Um, any other discussion on that one? Okay, uh, we don't have any discussion items. And then we do have information only, our current personnel recommendations. And then, does anybody have any further reports? Mr. Critfield?
Just want to acknowledge our teachers on the uh county office side as well. I have been in every uh extensive support needs classroom, which are run by county employees. Uh, I believe I've been in every single one more than once this year and just thoroughly impressed with uh the teachers and the staff and, and the heavy lift they have to do um in helping those kids. It's just so fun to watch um what they do every day, so I just want to express my appreciation to those teachers as well.
Sure. Ken, any additional report?
Uh, no additional reports.
Okay, Shane?
Just want to thank, um, my wife has returned to work this week and um just wanted to thank uh all the teachers and all the staff that have been so helpful to her through this uh recent uh medical issue that she's had. So they've been very helpful and just appreciate all their, their uh hard work.
Thanks. James? Okay, um, same thing on the county side. My son is taught by county teachers and they have done a fabulous job. And so um, just very appreciative of them over there as well because they do a heavy lift. People who are teaching special ed, sometimes I feel like they have two jobs. They're doing their teaching job in the day and then they're doing paperwork um after school and meetings. So it's, it's a lot. Um, that being said, our next meeting is also following the district meeting on Wednesday, June 11th. And with that, we are adjourned.